To my with.
Okay.
That was Mona.
Well, we are past three o'clock, so let's call the meeting to order.
I I wonder if Mr. Palito.
Oh, we have an iPhone on that might be Bob. I don't know who that is.
I don't see the iPhones. Do you?
Yeah, I I have an iPhone on.
It may or may not be him. He is aware of the three o'clock start time. He too is also out of town, so I'm sure he'll come on when he's he's able.
Yeah, no problem.
I'll go ahead and do a roll call, Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hawkins.
President.
Councilmember Lewis.
President.
Vice Mayor Whitmer.
Yep, here.
Mayor DeGolia.
Yes.
And when Councilmember Plato joins, I'll make sure to announce him.
Okay, so this is a special meeting. To deal with the housing issue. Uh, is Lisa, hi Lisa. I assume you're leading us off.
She is mayor, but we do have the public comment first.
That's right. Let me see if there's any public comments. This would be public comments for items on the agenda, right?
I see the iPhone and I see Mr. Malbec. So if you if you'd like to make a comment, please feel free to unmute and do that now.
Okay, I don't see any public comments. So let's go on to item number three, which is to discuss the housing element. Update strategies and provide direction to staff.
Sorry, just a minute here. Can you?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. So yes, this meeting is a follow up from your January twelfth meeting. Where the council provided direction on strategies for the housing element. Um, here's our housing needs allocation. We removed that twenty percent buffer that we talked about at the last meeting. So this is what's been assigned. By A bag for the real allocation for the eight year planning cycle. So I'm just going to walk through the strategies that the council provided direction on. If the council said we would rather not proceed with that strategy, I'm not going to carry it forward at this meeting. We've just dropped it for the time being. Um, so the first one I want to talk about is the conversation about. Encouraging housing at multifamily housing at the private schools. So as you're aware, it's currently allowed with a conditional use permit for teacher housing. And the town has relied on this as a strategy for the past several housing element cycles to achieve multifamily housing. The council asked that staff reach out to the schools to see if there was any code changes. That would be needed to achieve housing production. Council members also suggested considering properties adjacent to the schools as possible multifamily housing site. Um, I spoke with Menlo School. They are interested in developing housing near the campus. They indicated that their teachers and faculty would rather not live directly on campus. Um, but would be happy to live nearby campus. So. A site that would be most immediately adjacent might make some sense for Menlo School. Um, and then I also spoke to Memo College. And they are interested in developing some housing on the campus. Um, they had a site at the corner of El Camino and Alejandra. That's currently, I believe, O'Brien Parking Lot. They would need to retain that parking lot, so they may need some assistance with setback reductions in height. In order to achieve adequate space to build new housing and keep that parking. Uh, they also indicated they could be interested in housing adjacent to the campus, although they expressed some concern with the funding. Uh, to acquire a property and then also to build it. So financing was an issue. Sacred Heart indicated that they're not interested in developing new housing. They do have housing on the campus right now for um, the nuns. And they're probably in the future no longer going to need that. So it would be more likely they would repurpose that housing. Um, rather than build new housing. The um, nun housing is not currently considered housing units under the housing element. Because it's more of a like a dorm style or um, a care home style. So there's not independent living units with kitchens. If they were to convert it in the future and have more of apartment style, then those would be considered net new units that we could count. So that's something we can consider. I believe their timeline was past this housing element site or maybe into the next housing element cycle. But the town could consider changes to zoning regulations for the PFS zoning. Um, and also maybe a new overlay zone on properties adjacent to school sites. This could be applied to both public and private schools. And it would allow the schools to develop housing for its faculty on the property adjacent. This staff has included an assumption of thirty new units over the next cycle for school housing, based on the conversations with the two private schools I just mentioned. As I mentioned previously, HCD may be reluctant to accept this new strategy as this as a strategy. As the town has not realized production in the past. However, staff will in the housing element stress that the code changes are necessary to accommodate the development in this cycle. And will also request letters of support from the schools to make our case from HCD that we do anticipate it developing in this cycle.
So so Lisa, with regards to your last comment. That, uh, you know, I know that we've included the dorm and Menlo College. For years and never built it. Now we are building it. So you you know, I I think that 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 comment is, you know, maybe not so true.
The comment that HCD won't accept this housing?
They won't accept it because we've put it in before and we never mature and nothing materialized.
Yeah, and I think what we're going to stress though is that and and what I'd like to recommend is that we make some code changes to accommodate the housing. So we consider maybe some increased heights and reduce setbacks so that the school could accommodate it on their property. And then, as suggested by the council, the previous meeting, maybe having that overlay on the adjacent properties. That the the school could also pursue. So I think with those two combined new elements, I I am hopeful that HCD would accept it. Um, did you want me to pause at each item for discussion or just go through the presentation?
Uh, I think it's good to pause for discussion. Does anybody have a question or comment? On this? So. Okay, so that that looks like about thirty units there. Which makes sense to me. Are we not able to include any public school if public school wanted to? Build on their property?
Yeah, we can also do follow up and reach out to the public schools to see if they have any interest. I know they've. The district um, was looking in the past, but they had some financing challenges as well. So I can follow up again with the private.
Yeah, I think that I think that's important. You know, that's what we brought up before because they've. They've complained that they can't get teachers here, young teachers here because they can't afford to live here. And so. This would even if it's just temporary apartments, uh, you know, that would count and and they might be interested in that. So.
We'll do that follow up. Great. I'll move on to the next item then.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, so this is very similar to the last conversation and it would be allowing multifamily housing in the POS zoning district. So that's Bear Gulch Reservoir, Menlo Circus Club and Holbar Palmer Park. Um, I reached out to the two agencies and Cow Water. They're quite concerned about having just regular multifamily housing on their site. Because of security and safety concerns. But they would be interested in housing for new employees. Um, a lot of their newer employees, newer hires are having long commutes. And so um, they're concerned about housing. For those employees and also for disaster preparedness. So it's a scenario where their employees maybe live on site for three or four days during the shift and then go home. Um, I explained to Cow Water that if it was designed and intended as a housing unit, so designed as an apartment. Maybe a small apartment that then the town would be able to utilize that towards our renewables. So they understood that they were supportive. Um, they thought maybe four housing units during this cycle. We also reached out to Menlo Circus Club and they were not interested. Um, and we did not, we didn't really talk about use of any town property. I know the town. Property is quite limited with the park, but that is an option the town could certainly consider partnering with a nonprofit to build housing at the park. It could be senior housing or just regular affordable housing. Um, or. Purchasing adjacent property for housing as well. So.
Well, there's there's a. You know, over time, you know, we're going to reduce the size, I expect, by moving things to the park of the courtyard. And you may recall that the original idea for the civic center was that there was going to be some senior housing on top of it. And so I think I still think that that's not a bad idea, you know, maybe in the courtyard area or some other space to to do to consider that.
Are there other thoughts on council members for considering the courtyard area for housing during? Do you think during this eight year cycle or would it be more likely in the next eight year cycle?
From for me, you know, George is talking about doing something with the courtyard as soon as we're done with the civic center. So. I mean, it's come up at other meetings just recently.
Yeah. I know we've had community meetings previously and there was a real desire to have some um, smaller units or some senior housing to allow residents to kind of stay in the community. People really like being in Atherton and near Menlo Park. So I do see that's a great location for senior housing.
So um, through the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
My comment is that um, I think when George brought that idea up at the. Previous council meeting recently about the courtyard, that was um. Really well received by the majority of the council members. And I think that's something that we should look at. Um, and I think everybody in the neighborhood would also support something like that because I think everyone in the neighborhood would like very much to. Uh, get rid of all the um. Courtyard uh, clutter, I guess, uh, and activity. Um, but um, that has yet to be flushed out. It would be nice to be able to uh, say we could do that in this um, Rina cycle. I think it would be really helpful. I know that in the past um. Residents, uh, Jack Ringham for one, uh, brought up the idea of. Building some houses uh, for seniors uh, in the park, kind of where the um, Gilmore House is now. Uh, to keep uh, residents i- in the area. I'm not sure. I I think I may have misunderstood what you said, Mr. Whitmer Vice Mayor about. Um, originally, the idea was to put senior housing on top of the uh, civic center. That was not in my uh, e- existence uh, an idea, but I know that. A resident developer came before uh, council many, many years ago with that idea. And never essentially laughed out of the room. Okay, so uh, I don't think that senior housing on top of the. Uh, civic center, town center through this uh, recent design was ever really discussed at all.
Well, Mr. Mr. Marsala brought it up, but I'm not going to debate it with you, Elizabeth, but Mr. Marsala has brought that brought it up. Okay.
It was very, very long time ago and they.
It was a long time ago.
And the people came. Vice Mayor, you can object to what I'm saying. I'm trying to put it in perspective. Because what you said just now seemed to indicate that it was through this most recent uh, i- iteration. That, you know, it was originally designed to have.
No, I didn't. I didn't say that.
Ever originally designed.
I I didn't. I didn't say that. Okay, but I but but I'm sorry that you misunderstood what I said.
Yes, I am too.
Well, I love the idea of housing at the courtyard site. Um, and I can meet with George and we can maybe come up with some numbers of how many units and what kind of. Range of affordability we might want to consider there. So I think that would be very well received by HCD. Yes.
Uh, so. If we need to rezone for that to be considered by HCD. Um, rather than it just be the idea. I think the, first of all, I think the interest in the. Community for any additional housing in the park. Is going to be an absolute zero. And I mean, there will be people that are interested in that, but it it won't command. Uh, broad support, I don't believe. Uh, I also think that to put housing where the courtyard is now. Is an interesting idea, except that it would require moving the courtyard to the park. Which has been tested before and been totally shut down. So I'm not optimistic that uh. The community would support that. Um, so i- if in fact. Getting HCD credit for anything in the courtyard would require us to actually. Rezone that and move the courtyard. I don't think that's going to happen in this housing element cycle.
Do we have any other properties? That.
No, we just have the park and the town center.
So no- nothing up by Bear Gulch. None of that's ours.
No.
No.
Um, is it conceivable to rent space? Because the that's kind of industrial use. And this is not industrial use. Would that be a feasible thought?
What do you mean?
Uh, if we if if we, the problem of using the courtyard is that we're going to have to move all the stuff that's in there. That's all industrial kind of usage space. Could we rent a place for that in, you know, some poor part of Redwood City? And then use our premier real estate for something else. Just a random thought. I don't know.
It's something we could certainly investigate, but I don't. Believe that that would be as feasible as it. As easily as it sounds, but it's it's certainly worth looking into.
You also mentioned uh, housing for police and fire. As something to not just senior stuff. And those little units, those mobile units.
I mean. Frankly, I I. I think I I don't know what the intricacies are with pursuing that. I I think George has a better sense of it, but. Uh, your comment is uh, I think well focused in that. The property, even though it's next to the train tracks, but in where the courtyard is now. Is worth a lot more than some industrial property, probably. Not too far from our property line in Redwood City. And if, you know, as a town, if we were to look at. What we could. Get for renting. Town homes, a few. Where the courtyard is now versus what we'd have to pay to rent space to move the courtyard. That that might be an interesting idea. I don't think we've really considered that before.
If you wanted to use the housing for firefighters and police as well, as long as they were designed like as a studio unit with a kitchen, bathroom, sleeping facilities. We could count that as a housing unit. So it doesn't need to be large. It could be quite small and efficient and still count towards the housing goals.
And the fire department already owns the land.
I did ask about that. Elizabeth and I met with our liaison to the fire department. But I guess what they said is in Atherton, the only land they owned was on Amadra. Is that right? What he said, Elizabeth?
Well, the house that they bought, which is adjacent to the fire station on Almond Drawl. And that's the only property that they own in Atherton. All the other um. Fire stations and everything else that is in Menlo Parker in the county.
But he didn't. He didn't poo poo the idea.
No, he did not.
He did not. So that one is worth at least exploring one more time, too.
Exactly.
And what what was that? What was the exploration?
Whether they would, they have housing for fire temporary, you know, housing for their firemen on their property.
But I think uh, what he said, Diana, was the reason they purchased that uh. Property was to land bank it for the future when they would redevelop that. Fire station because that existing fire station is a little under um. Sized for their current equipment and for the current needs. You know, if you take a look at the fire station, they're just building up on uh, Alameda, well, Delas Pogus at Valparaiso. Um, you know, that is, that's their MO. That's what they usually do. But I think he said, you know, they could maybe take a look at it, but I think the long term and with a new chief, you just don't know. Okay, because with the old chief, that was his um, you know, planning process. So um. I think your idea, Diana, uh, is it is really worth taking a look at because. There are industrial properties just off of Marsh Road uh, and Fifth Avenue. Close by in Redwood City and, you know, we maybe we could even buy a small, you know, half acre or something. Uh, there and use that for our courtyard. I think the 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 logistics, though. Uh, it would just mean more time on the road for our um. Service workers to take stuff there. You know, it's it's not as convenient. As being in town.
How how much of it is storage?
George would have to answer that.
I'll kick that one over to Robert. I think he's on the line here, but there is a large amount of storage in both of our courtyards. One, the one at the park and the one here. The one here is more uh, streets, roads, drainage focused. The one here being at a town hall, the one at the park is more park focused. Uh, in terms of the materials and stuff. We do have. You know, chemicals and heavy equipment and skip loaders and and uh, you know, sand for sandbags and tree and debris clearance areas and things like that in the yard. In that open space area of the yard that requires a lot of space to turn around vehicles and manipulate the vehicles and materials. So that's a a need as well. Like I said, some of that could probably be moved to the park. Uh, but not all of it. And the the types of activities that we would think about for exterior to the town. Uh, renting in Redwood City or such, you know, where we would store the skip loaders and such. And so MCE or whatever contractor or staff. Would need to go to those locations to retrieve that equipment. And then bring it into town. And then the event of an emergency, that can get a little complicated. Uh, so Robert, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, just a couple minor things. Um, you know, one of the things that has been going on throughout construction is. A lot of the space at the current courtyard has been. Overtaken by construction activity. And so we actually did transition. Uh, our normal um, I'll call it a tree debris bin and other green waste activities. As well as the dumping of um. The street sweeper stuff. To the park temporarily. We've relocated temporarily our sandbag station to the park. But our operations in the courtyard have been hampered quite a bit with the reduction in space. Uh, due to the construction activities. And we are, I'll say eager to get that space back so we can move some of that stuff. Back out of the park because it's not really very attractive and conducive to the park uses. So as George mentioned, we keep our vehicles, our equipment. Um, everything from barricades to stockpiles of um. Base rock, asphalt material, sand and other things that are used on a regular basis in the courtyard. So.
One of the things that happens, I don't know if you've noticed, uh, sometimes we'll have a skip loader going up and down the roadway. So that skip loader will travel into the courtyard, grab that base rock and material that Robert's talking about. And then drive it to the location in town where it needs to be processed for a road patch or something like that. Doing that, coming and going from Redwood City or an adjacent community would be a bit of a problem.
In addition to putting heavy wear and tear on the equipment to get it back and forth.
I mean, it I it may be interesting that since we've been able to move the sandbag area and. Uh, whatever else you mentioned to the park now. I don't, I'm not, I haven't heard that that's caused anyone any great concern. So maybe. That could be a permanent move. Elizabeth.
I'm going to agree with you, Mayor. And and just. Suggest that. While we say that uh, it's kind of unsightly and not very attractive uh, at the park. I I think that with some creative. You know, ideas and planning, you know, we could make it better. And um, I just, I just feel that since we are. Uh, so restricted. With uh, any other town properties that we um. Should. You know, I don't think anybody really wants to build housing in the park. I think that's that's true, except maybe Jack Ringum suggested that. But I agree with the city manager that, you know, we really don't want to bring uh, mul- uh, multifamily housing or, you know, density into the park. But if we can create an access to um, you know, our existing. A courtyard, park courtyard and integrate um, everything. Into that. I I just think there's just got to be a way. That we can do it such that we don't destroy the look and feel of the park and yet. Uh, have it be functional for us, too. I just, I I I refuse to just accept the fact that it's an ugly mess and we just can't do anything about it. Um, I I think that uh, if that's our only other option, we'll make it work. And if we, if our uh, the highest and best use for the courtyard next to this town center is, you know, housing for fire, our police officers and. You know, some rental multi housing. Um, that's what we should focus on and try to get that clutter. Out of our town center because it is an eyesore there also. But it's been an eyesore for a long, long time, so we're kind of used to it. That's just, I I just feel that, you know, we we shouldn't just throw our hands up and say, ah, we just can't do it.
This is one we can certainly continue to explore.
Thank you, city manager.
Right, I'll move on to the next item.
Yes, please.
Um, so the council also talked about reduced lot size. Currently, it's a one acre minimum. Um, and there was conversation about reducing to forty thousand square feet, which commonly known as a Atherton acre and reducing the lot width and depth. Um, although the strategy would be largely implemented with SB nine, this town could consider reducing the lot size. Not sure how many additional subdivisions we would see with this. It would mostly accommodate um, some flag lots. And maybe assist some of those two acre parcels and subdividing if they can't quite meet the lot depth and width. Um, so staff has estimated eight new units during the next cycle. And as I noted in the staff report, if they were to reduce it to say an Atherton acre, they could still apply SB nine provisions into an urban lot split after that. So I just wanted to be clear. So any conversation on that item?
Yeah, Elizabeth.
I would vote no on doing this because I think the uh, return on this uh, type of uh, reduction. Um, is minimal, eight over eight units over eight years. And with the SB nine already giving um, the opportunity to, you know, do it. Um, I think that we should just. Let that and not be proactive in this uh, particular um, action.
Okay. Yeah, I I I agree with that. I I mean, we can see if eight units makes a difference. At the end of our count, but. I, this is one I'd skip.
I think we can make it up at the courtyard.
So does that sounds like consensus?
Well, I don't know. That's just too, yeah, Elizabeth.
Two out of five.
Well, I saw Diana. Yeah, anybody else?
I I agree. I agree.
Phil agrees.
Yeah, I do, too.
Okay, oh, let's move on.
Great, thank you. Okay, so let's see. I think we're on the big item now. Yeah. So um, we talked about kind of a townhouse multifamily overlay. Um, and the concept is single family residential uses will remain a permitted land use. And we would apply an overlay zone so that if a property owner wanted to develop, they could apply certain development standards. And create town homes or some other form of multifamily housing. So the council requested that we revise a map that was reviewed at the last meeting. And also consider ten units an acre rather than up to twenty units an acre. So what I have next is um, the map. And this was prepared based on council direction just to look at properties. That are along major corridors, adjacent to schools and adjacent to other jurisdictions with higher densities. Staffs prepare this map for discussion purposes only and to obtain direction from the council. I think it would be preferred to have areas for consideration narrowed down a bit so that we can um. Conduct some community outreach. And some areas that I'm going to show you in the next few maps have kind of zoomed in, maybe along El Camino Real, adjacent to the. Maybe along El Camino Real, adjacent to the schools on Valparaiso. Um, Middlefield Road along the northern border of town. And the north side of Marsh and then adjacent to Menlo Atherton High School. So. If you don't mind, I'm just going to walk through kind of a zoomed in area to maybe help focus the conversation. And then we can go back to this map if you want. So one area to consider would be the properties that kind of front on El Camino Real. Um, and then there's also some properties here. I think one's on Oakwood that has already expressed interest and then some along El Camino. You're going to note that many of these properties access El Camino and some of these properties take access from other adjacent streets. However, it'd be very difficult for the town to go through and design a map where you were to kind of skip some properties, almost a sawtooth approach. We need to have a map that's a bit more contiguous. So we can't, you know, put one in, two out, one in, um, it needs to be a little more logical. So that's one scenario maybe to kind of focus conversation on. The next area would be adjacent to the private schools on Valparaiso. So as indicated. The schools did seem interested in maybe acquiring property adjacent to develop some housing. We could include these properties here that were left out adjacent to, um, El Camino. I didn't include them because they don't take access on El Camino. But if you're kind of developing a neighborhood here. With the schools and with the potential for some, you know, slightly higher density housing, it might make sense to include those as well from that access point.
Well, they, you know, those are, you know, the, the smaller houses and, and those would be the ones that'd be more affordable for the, for the schools to buy.
Certainly.
So I think that they should be.
I have my hand raised.
I have mine too.
Yeah, um, well, do you want to, let, let's let Lisa finish on this item and then take the comments.
Yeah, and then I can go back to, to each map if you want. I just wanted to zoom in on a couple of areas that'll help focus the conversation maybe. And then this is the area in the northern portion of town. So, um, here's Middlefield. Sorry, it got a little blurry. Marsh Road coming through. Um, so the council couldn't consider just the perimeter sites. A lot of those due to take access on the major roads. Or it could consider this whole area as a potential for a small neighborhood. So that's like Encinitas, Placita, San Benito, Palmer, Holbert Lane. And then the next area is, um, along Middlefield Road. And here we've got, um, Menlo Atherton High School. And Seneda School and Laurel School. And then there are a few properties that take access along Bay Road. The rest of these properties, um, are accessed from Lindenwood Neighborhood and do not have curb cuts to Bay Road. So just these do. So this could be another area if you were to consider, um, a map to include these properties. So I can go back and talk about any area you want.
Yeah, okay. So we'll take the comments, Elizabeth, and then Bill again. If you're, I'm assuming your hand's still up, Bill.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, um. Lisa, thank you. Thank you for, uh, the explanation and walking us through some of your rationale. Um, my, uh, my question was about, uh, Valparaiso at E C R. And I know that you're including. The whole of Victoria Manor, uh, in the yellow, uh, tinted. Uh, map, but not the ones that are facing, um, that don't face El Camino, but they do access. Uh, from, uh, Victoria Lane. And they're, they're across, yeah, those. And they're across from all the yellow ones, all the other yellow ones. So, um. It just makes sense to me that those blues should also be included.
Correct, I agree. And we may want to think about, now that we've talked to kind of Menlo Circus Club, do you want to exclude kind of this area? And then that may exclude a few of these properties as well. And then just really focus on more immediately adjacent to the school. And including the area you mentioned here of Victoria Manor.
Yes. I cannot begin to imagine. Uh, the green, uh, of, you know. The, the five acre, those, those lots being, uh, included. Um, you want to put, uh, the, the little houses along Emily here, all along Emily. Um. I, I don't know because you're just kind of, um. Making the houses that back up against each other that face Olehandra and the Bain. Kind of an island there. I, I think that's not a good idea, but. You know, I probably shouldn't vote on that because I think my house is included in one of those little boxes.
Okay, Bill.
Yeah, um, so first off, when I'm, when I'm looking at some of the properties that you've highlighted that are. On Laurel, but they're actually flag lots going into Laurel and, and I can understand why you did that because they're. They're bordering on Nativity School, I assume. But that, the, the Archdiocese of, uh, San Francisco owns all of Valparaiso. All the way up through the midpoint and, and there's no way that they would be buying that property. So I think that. Plus, one of those properties is going to apply for the Mills Act. So it's, it's. It's, it's foolish for us to identify that area as, as one because it, it, you know, it will never happen.
I'm sorry, which street are you on?
On Laurel, okay. So you go down Laurel, but move the map down a little bit.
This one?
Uh, we're gonna have to go to the big map.
Green, the green, the yellow and the green. Go up to Menlo, to where, where Nativity School is, which is on Laurel Avenue, Laurel Street, okay?
I don't think I can zoom in here, but I'll take note of that. Okay.
Okay, then the other ones is that, you know, in that area that's. Just off of Middlefield, of, of Marsh Road. That, you know, that area there, there's all those small lots, okay? They border on areas with high density housing. And so I, I think in areas where we have high density housing already, we should be doing, we, we should have colored those. We didn't. And I, I didn't. Yes, those blue ones.
Okay, so all, all in the middle then? I just did the perimeter. You're talking about the.
You didn't even do the perimeter, the, the going down. Moving. You didn't do all the perimeter.
This neighborhood?
Yeah, right there.
Oh, these here, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, it's kind of how they took access. Yeah. So we could do the perimeter or we could do the whole neighborhood?
Well, eh, eh, yeah, I, I'm, um. You could do the whole neighborhood, but at a minimum, if you're going to do this perimeter, I mean, that was one of the things. You've gone ahead and you've said, okay, I'm going to take. Uh, I'm going to identify and highlight, uh, all the different homes that are on areas with high density housing. Uh, or that, you know, border neighborhoods and, and you didn't do that, okay? There's a whole lot. Just if you go further down, there's all. There's all green housing down there, which would be. Uh, down, down off of, uh, I guess that's, uh, Selby Lane. Okay, so.
But she's, the green counts. It's just more than an acre.
Yeah.
The green, the green and the yellow count. It's just that the yellow's under an acre and the green's over an acre.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, so I see what you're saying though. I could have included these properties here.
Yeah, and then also in West Atherton going up toward, you know, you didn't show those. I mean, one of the things, if we're going to do something and we're going to highlight certain areas. And say, well, we only picked areas that bordered, then pick them all. Pick all of them, okay? Whether they're in West Atherton or not. You, you know, the ones that are in far West Atherton, you've left blue.
Yeah, these back up to open space. These are the ones, continue here.
Okay. All right, well then.
Well, you're suggesting that they should, they should be included?
Yeah, I'm saying that they should. We're saying all borders, we, you know, we should have as, uh, you know, as, as open. Now, I'm not so sure that that's the right answer personally.
No, that's what I was hoping we could refine it at this meeting. Maybe refine the map a bit.
Okay.
Yeah. Cause what I need to do next is take this map to the community. And so I'd like to take a map that's got, you know, a little more council support.
Yeah.
Before we go talk to everybody.
Okay, so, so given that, given that, then, then I, I think that that whole area that's off of Marsh. And, and the area that border, you know, is on Marsh. I think that that, that is one area that should be identified. I think that. The Victoria Manor and around Carton Field like you have, I think that that's there, although the, the Brittany Lane Meadows. Uh, uh. Houses are not going to be affordable for the college or the, or the, uh, the school to purchase. Um. And I think that, you know, along Valparaiso is, is, is a good area, but, and also down, uh, I guess that, what is that? Stockbridge that runs down along the unincorporated part of Menlo Park and Redwood City. I think that that's, that's, that's a solid area. I think that those are the key ones that I would have. I would, I would eliminate the rest of them. Except for, well, you did mention across the street from Menlo, Menlo, uh, and, and near Menlo, uh, High School. And which case then I would add. Uh, if you go down Oak Grove, those houses that are, that border the athletic fields, I think that those should be available to, uh, to the high school to buy.
Uh, Bob?
Uh, yeah, first of all, I apologize for getting in late. I couldn't get the link to work and suddenly it worked. So maybe Anthony fixed something. I don't know. Um, uh, Lisa, this is probably just me. But I have a lot of difficulty with this map because there's virtually no, no labeling and I don't have a master. So. Maybe the next time we look at this. You could highlight, uh, major thoroughfares in some way, shape or form. It's probably just me, but. It's hard for me to.
Yes.
Know what we're talking about.
Uh, okay, let me, let me make a couple of comments because I, I, I'm coming from a really different place. Uh. I, setting aside the issue of the schools, which I think we could talk about more, although I agree. With Bill's comment that the college isn't going to buy any property next to it. And, um, I don't think that Sacred Heart is going to do that. It's possible Menlo School would, so we should revisit that. But for me, the only properties on this whole map that I would look at are the five properties that face Bay Road. Uh, and we don't see the characteristic of the properties across the street from those five. But if you look. At, at the far right-hand corner, upper right-hand corner of the map, there are five. Properties that I think are green. That, um, those front, there where the arrow is, those five properties front onto Bay Road. And the community, Something Garden Community, right across the street. From those five properties are all very small houses. The large property to the left of those streets is Flood Park. So I think. All I would do is enable ten, ten, uh, townhouses on those five properties. And do the same on the two properties on Oakwood that are right next to where the circle is. One is owned by Arada and the other one is across the street from him. And those two properties front onto Oakwood and are next to smaller houses. I think Arada's next to a multifamily house. I would.
But yeah, there are apartments there.
I wouldn't do anything else on the map. And unless we decided to do something with a few properties around Menlo School. I think if you take this map into these communities, like you go into Victoria Manor, you're going to be screamed out of there. And I, I wouldn't support it in any of those properties if the school wants to find a property. Like, eh, I, I think that they used to use a property, maybe they still do.
They do.
For the headmaster.
They do.
If they wanted to develop that as a one-off, I would consider it, but I, I think there'd be a lot of neighborhood reaction. I think all these other properties, the idea of transforming that whole neighborhood. Uh, that is east of Middlefield, that's right next to North Fair Oaks. Uh, into multifamily will be a firestorm. There, the people who have bought in there have bought more affordable houses and they absolutely want single family houses. So I, I would not support. Anything other than those seven properties I just mentioned. And I think with those seven properties, we can get enough houses. To satisfy our requirement. Uh, and, and while I'm on it, uh, the, I would make an adjustment. Uh, to what has, what we've been advised in terms of. The number of ADUs, which is estimated to be, um.
Thirty, thirty a year.
Thirty a year. Yeah, I would change that to be thirty-five a year. I, I think we could support thirty-five a year. And I think we'll meet, we'll, we'll make it with those changes and maybe. A couple of properties around the Menlo School. If Menlo School, I understand Menlo School's comment. About teachers not wanting to be on campus, wanting to be just off campus. I would support that, but we have, we have to look at the specific properties because the community will be very, very sensitive.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, you mentioned those are the only properties you would support. What about the town center one for affordable housing there?
Well, the town center, yeah, that's a different issue. If we can move the town center. Uh, 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 either by renting or buying a parcel like off Marsh Road, I, I, I think that's definitely something that's worth considering.
All right, thanks.
Um, I don't know if the city attorney wants to have any comment on. The concept of five. You still, yeah, five parcels in one area and two parcels in another area, is this any district?
I don't have a comment right now. I think what we would have to do is we'd have to identify certain criteria that, um, uh. Makes it objectively reasonable to do that. So if there's particulars about the, the, you know. Area or the lots, but I don't have any thoughts at this moment.
Yeah, so just from my, um, analysis, the, my reasoning is that those are properties. That are directly adjacent to, uh, much smaller properties. And, and have access right there. I understand that some of the properties that are, that are highlighted in green along. The northern edge of the town limit, which I'm not sure if it's off Selby Lane or off Culdesax. That border onto Redwood City. They, they also are close to. Multifamily housing, but they're, they're. The front, the, the driveways from those properties don't. Front onto the same street as the multifamily housing, whereas the Bay Road and the Oakwood properties do. So that's the rationale. Elizabeth.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so. When I raised my hand, I was going to ask, because you, um, the question about spot zoning. By saying you could only, you know, you would just want those two that are on Oakwood. And these five over here on Bay Road and stuff, because that is, that would have to. Qualify for not being spot zoned. And the other comment was. That you made, I was going to ask for clarification because you said, um. That Menlo School has purchased houses, ne, a, a house next to them, next in, in that Victoria Manor. And they are using it for their headmaster, but that is just a single family. They haven't developed it. And so if they wanted to develop that into multi-units to rent out, you know, I, I, it would be. Um, we couldn't overlay a spot zone there without creating more of a, um. Uh, a fuller area, uh, for an overlay for development. And those were going to be my comments. I, I, I would like to know from the city planner, um. How many? Units can we get with the smallest amount of overlay? And, um, you know, because this is just not something that I think we could take to the town anyway. And. Um, so just let us know what is the smallest amount of, uh. Changes that we would need to make. And I agree wholeheartedly with the mayor that, um. Uh, I would not like to see all of Alameda Dallas Pogus. For, just because it's on a thoroughfare. But, um, those are a couple of questions.
Did you want to answer that, Lisa?
Want me to comment? Well, I, I would love to be able to answer that question, but.
Want me to comment? Well, I would love to be able to answer that question, but nobody knows. It's kind of a, you know, a target with HCD. So I've talked to some of our consultants and there's some concern that if we just kind of consider a few fringe properties, it feels still very exclusionary. And it could be challenged by housing advocates is not affirming fair housing and providing opportunities, you know, for housing for all income categories. So having a larger area, for example, Oakwood down part of El Camino feels a little bit more something that HCD might accept. But it's just very difficult for us to predict, you know, if we put the overlay on five lots, that HCD is going to say yes, we we would anticipate that all of them developing. We are getting a fiscal analysis done to support the inclusionary ordinance that will also say if this is financially viable as an option. And so I'm going to have the consultant focus on the areas that you decide tonight. But it's very hard for us to be able to predict that.
Diana?
I had one question. There was a gentleman that came on who wanted to create a unit. Where on the map was that? Because that was in a that's right by that little point is.
Yep, that is the property where the point is.
And I think it's a 1.8 acre site. So it's it's large. It's just very long.
That's a great location for that, by the way. I I'm familiar with it. Some of these neighborhoods I'm not familiar with. The other thing, the question I want to ask is just because we changed the zoning and allow it doesn't mean they're going to build it. So it almost seems like we we're we're on a fine line of not wanting to get people mad because our house is rezoned and they view their property as losing value versus getting enough opportunity where someone might actually do something. So that's what that's the balancing act we're trying to figure out here.
That's exactly right.
Hey, Bob?
I just want to make sure I understand this. This five lots you're talking about, that's that's where Bay Road hits Ring Ringwood?
Well, no, the Ringwood is the street perpendicular to it. The one in the corner is both Ringwood and Bay. The other four are 100% Bay.
Yeah, but
But it is where Ringwood hits Bay.
Why did you pick those? There's no multifamily housing there that I know of. I I I live around the corner.
Across the street from them, they're they're very, very small lots. I I thought there was some multifamily housing immediately across the streets from those.
Not to my knowledge, that there are some small houses along Bay.
Maybe they're just a series of small houses.
Yeah. And when you get behind them, actually, some of those houses have gotten to be pretty big and pretty expensive. But to my knowledge, there's no multifamily back there.
Maybe maybe they're just the small houses. I just looked at the plots on the map.
Okay, I don't think they they are what you think they are. I don't think they're near what you think they're near to. But anyway, and the other two lots are the ones next to the school
No, where where the arrow is on Oakwood, right there on Oakwood.
Okay, okay, okay. I don't know anything about that, other than the fact it's on the fringe of our town.
It's on the fringe next to Redwood City and one of them is owned by Arada, who has made a proposal for multifamily housing owner. Mona?
Thank you, Mayor DeGolia. I just wanted to provide one bit of clarity on an issue since the the topic of spot zoning was raised. So normally, spot zoning applies if the council were was to create a new zoning category that would downsize the zoning or impose greater restrictions. But if what you're doing is allowing more opportunities for development, then we have significant more discretion to do that. Having said that, and again, like I I said earlier, I don't have any kind of standards that I'd be able to articulate right now. But if the council at some point in the future could articulate a basis and a public interest for why we want to treat certain properties different and have a different category of zoning for certain areas that could be permissible. And it's possible that that would not be considered unlawful spot zoning. So.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? George?
Mr. Mayor, perhaps it would be helpful if Lisa could put up that table of if she has it on a slide presentation of the numbers for each one. And I think you've discussed every one of the options thus far and provided feedback and maybe coming up with a which ones work, which ones don't, and see where your numbers lie will help you get to your question or.
I think there is consensus on the school and facility sites. Lot splits, there was a request to increase the ADUs. You've eliminated the reduced lot size, so that's eight. And then if we add in, though, some interest with the Corporation Yard, I'm just not sure what that number of units might look like, but what I'm hoping is I can fill out a very low income category with those units because we've got an issue there. We will increase it if we increase all the ADUs, though. So we do have a surplus, as you see, in most income categories based on what we've presented to you. And then if we have reduce properties on the townhome overlay, it might be appropriate to also reduce that scenario by a bit as well.
Okay, Diana?
I wanted to pick up on what Mona was saying in terms of creating a criteria. When we first started down this discussion, we were talking about houses that are directly located to density. And so where there's already sitting in a neighborhood with small houses. And then the other criteria we talked about was access off of main streets as opposed to going off the end of, you know, cul-de-sacs and things like that, that are more like insular neighborhoods. So those were the criteria that we were talking about to make it not be spot zoned. But we do we have a way of looking at what we already have and see if we were to just take the first criteria density, so sitting immediately next to dense houses, to see which ones pop up?
Well, I think it's not just being next to them, but it's also having driveway or, you know, the the access into the property is on on the same road as those. So they're not just backing up to.
Exactly. So if we wanted to limit that map, but we took those two criteria, what would happen to that map if we took that criteria?
Yeah, I get 354 also.
And that that's not including the townhome yet. Yeah.
That's correct. Or the overlay.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
So it would be, I mean, even if we did those, let's see. Maybe you do 30, 40. Might might make more sense. And then I'll need to figure out. This is probably eight. Something like that. And obviously I have to adjust all the other numbers.
Yeah.
Where are we putting these downhouses? Excuse me, to Mayor, where are we putting these townhouses now?
She she has to go back and rework the map with the criteria that Diana suggested. I I identified seven parcels. If you did those seven parcels, you might get forty townhouses townhouses out of them.
He's got the five on Bay and then two over here on Oakwood.
Yeah. And then, you know, I if we need more, I I would still look at that northeast part of town. I I'll I'll drive out there and and look and see what type of houses are around it. You know, I think that that's one of the key things or what type of facilities, if there's apartments there, like, for example, Arada's house, he's got multifamily homes, two story, but multifamily apartments right across right across the street from them. So you know, so it makes sense that that would that would go there. So it, you know, like, like Bob suggested, you know, it's it's got to make sense, too. So we should go check out what what those houses are in that area.
I agree with that. I my my comment, though, I know, I know a bunch of people that live in that area and to make the whole area an overlay area will I mean, that's not going to happen. We're just not going to have the support. There's going to be a firestorm. So maybe maybe there are some locations where it makes sense. I think you'd have to go look.
Yeah. And the other thing is, is that with regards to to Menlo School, you know, where they built their brand new facility, they used to have an area, you know, from where the where the campus is, that was just to the west of there called the Village and that all the teachers lived there. There was like eight or eight to 10 houses, small houses there. So you know, I I would think that they might be interested in, you know, or the other thing is, is that, you know, Steven Weiner has a house that's right next to 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 Van's house. So, you know, both both the college and the and the school own a house in Victorian Manor. So they might want to expand, but I mean, that they should have the option, but only for school use or faculty use or something like that. You know, if we could restrict the things, so we're maintaining you know, quality of homes and the type, what, you know, okay, so the teachers aren't paid very much, you know, so they're they're in one of the middle categories. You know, I don't think there'd be objection to that from, you know, in the neighborhood. So that's something I think we should consider still.
Well, I I looking at that map, there's two areas that I'm sure there'd be objection to. One is all of Victoria Manor, that's a fairly tight knit neighborhood. They're just not going to be
No, I agree. I I
And and secondly, to the west of Menlo School, coming off of Valparaiso is Michael's Lane. Those folks, I I just think they're going to that there would be a problem with that. And and I think it might I'm not sure where exactly where McBane is. But I think McBane is perpendicular to Michael's. Yeah, that that's
Yeah. I I agree with you there, Rick. And I also pointed out, you know, when I met with George, I just don't see houses on Isabella and on Brittany Meadows being sold to the school. They're just too expensive.
No. They're not. Those are college, the college isn't going to buy any property. Bob or George and then Bob?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and Council. So before staff goes out and starts to shop this map around through community meetings, we really needed to be tight consensus on areas that are supported by the council.
Right.
So if at the end of this conversation, you can let staff very clearly know, include these areas, don't include these others. Because we need to start shopping around, as you mentioned, some consultants to do some additional work and then start to publicize this with community meetings. So that's the hope at the end of this meeting.
Right.
Okay, Bob? So I don't think any neighborhood in Atherton is going to be enthusiastic about any permutation of this map. However, I I have one area in particular, and that's any property that faces the El Camino. I I'm not so sure I understand why that wouldn't be one of the more obvious places to consider what we have to do. Maybe somebody can fill me in. Somebody who doesn't live on the El Camino, I guess.
So Bob, I through the mayor, I will just say that I concur with Mr. Polito, his analysis. I think we've all kind of over the years realized that this day was going to come at some time where we would have to create an an area or areas in our town to allow for some more high density. And so I think that what Mr. Polito has said and I what I have felt that other members have been in agreement with is, like you say, the green on that is on Oakwood and then coming around to El Camino, down the down the El Camino, I'm not sure about on the other side of El Camino, you know, to flank it like that is such a good idea. I think we should maybe do the study with just the the two green units, parcels that the mayor has indicated and it's there. And then down El Camino to I guess that would be like Valparaiso, right? But none of the other larger properties along Alejandra, flanking Alejandra or the field, Isabella, Isabella, absolutely no, because there's a huge homes that have just been built there on Isabella there off of El Camino, right there where her arrow is. And then if you come around the the field, that's Brittany Meadows, you've just got those houses that back up to the baseball field. That, I mean, those are gorgeous, gorgeous home. And that's a community that would just be destroyed if you overlay those three green ones and that one yellow one. So if you move your, keep going up and then the ones next to the parking lot, come come towards Menlo School, Menlo College there. Yeah. So if you, this, this is Menlo College by, yeah, the big one. And you come down Alejandra and you've got those two. And all of those, those are beautiful homes on McBane, that cul-de-sac and then on on Alejandra. That would be terrible. And then, of course, is it Edwards? Is it? What is it? Edwards off of that's there's McBane and I think that's Edwards.
No.
Well, Michelson.
Michael, Michael Way is off of Valparaiso, but that whole thing, that I just, I would say, no, you just can't do that.
So I guess El Camino would stop at Isabella then and not come down to Valparaiso.
Right, right.
Okay.
Right. And then nothing else that you've got highlighted in and around the Circus Club or, you know, the school and just leave all that alone and see where you come up with.
And then you want to just look at the two properties that are already owned by the school? Sam and Steve Weiner's homes? I believe they're owned by the school and not the individuals.
Right, they're owned by the school. Yeah. Well, one's owned by the school and one's owned by the college, right?
Yeah.
One's owned by the college, one's owned by the school.
We could look at those two.
Yeah, that that other street is Howard Way.
Howard Way, Edward Howard. Thank you.
And Michael.
And then Michael's Way. But I would not do any of that. And then going all the way up Valparaiso, I wouldn't do any of that all the way up and and Alameda Dallas Pogus. None of that, nothing on Stockbridge, nothing on that little jog on Stockbridge. Or Selby, it's that that's Selby, right?
It's Selby.
That's Selby. Definitely not. No. No.
Okay, Diana?
Yeah, I was going to propose a procedure for how we go about this because I don't think that we can look at a map and decide without images of what the actual things are that are sitting there. So if we take the criteria of the things that we are are just our cognitive map of what the houses are like. But if we don't go back to our criteria being that sitting next to dense houses and it's on an accessible street by the dense houses and we look at those places, at some point, all of the council members really need to actually look at them, whether it's through pictures or some more real thing than this. But making this decision like this is logical, but there's the next step of what's reality.
Okay, so let let me try to recenter in a certain way. And when Lisa put up the numbers, they came out to 354. And that and I I'm not sure whether that included anything for the corp yard. No, it hasn't yet. But it still comes up to 354. We're required to have 348 and we want a little bit of overage, probably a little bit more than six units. But with the corp yard, we can probably get there. And then the question is, well, okay, if that's what we're doing, then what are these 40 overlay units? I I don't disagree with the comment that Bob made about El Camino Real, but we do not need to do that at this point for El Camino Real and we're going to have to revisit But we do not need to do that at this point for El Camino Real, and we're gonna have to revisit this in eight years anyway. And we're gonna have to revisit it with some new information, so. My inclination is to do the minimum we need to do to get to those forty units that are identified as townhouse overlay, which is, you know, four properties, which is probably, I don't know, some number of properties slightly more than four, to be able to get there. And, and that may be more than the five houses and the two houses I identified. There may be, I, I like the criteria, the way Diana defined it, and Bill may find that there's a few houses over in North Fair Oaks area that he was looking at. I'm not sure there are, but there might be. I, I do think we need to get very specific, which is what George has requested. But we may need one more iteration of this. I mean, this, this effort is greatly reducing the number of properties in the overlay. If we only have to get to forty, we don't need, we definitely don't need more than ten. So this is, this, this is a relatively small piece of that map, very small. Uh, Bill?
Yeah, so, so first off, I, I agree with you. I'd like to see this again. We, you know, with all the discussions and people saying, okay, we'll do it that way, or we're not gonna do it that way without changing it on the map. It, it makes it difficult. So I'd like, I'd like to see that changed on the map. And so I think that that would be important for us to spend a little bit of time, again, one more time, taking a look at that. And so I, I think that that's the most important, so everybody feels good and everybody can give a consensus to it. Thanks.
Okay, Bob?
I think there's a, what Diana said is extremely important. I mean, the first thing I'll do when I get back is take Lisa's map, which I will have written down the, the names of the major streets so I don't get lost. And go around and, and look at what we're talking about. And I'll probably come back with some, you know, fairly firm opinions about, about where it makes more sense to me at least, to do a townhouse overlay. And also, as, as an unrelated comment, I'm not sure, Rick, you said we get to three fifty-four, but I'm, I'm not sure we got to, we really said we're gonna get to thirty-four with school and facility sites. So Lisa, were, were you gonna revisit that set of numbers?
Um, well, those assume that Menlo College constructed on their property. Cow Water constructed on their property and then Menlo School was interested in maybe acquiring adjacent properties.
Okay, so that, those are, that, that number's realistic. Okay, that's right. I just wanna make sure.
Diana?
Uh, one last question on the, did we look at the properties along the railroad tracks? Do any of those meet our requirements?
Not really.
None of those properties front to a major thoroughfare or border on the town. They're all in neighborhood, small neighborhood streets.
Okay, Bill?
Unless you look.
Yeah, just, just one, one last comment is that, you know, Rick and I were, were meeting during his office hours and we had some residents there. And the comment, because the resident saw this and said, okay, so what you're gonna do is you're gonna ring the town, all the borders, okay? And then the next time we end up needing to expand, then we're gonna ring the town again. And so if you already said it's okay to go one, one property in, well, next time it'll be two, and then it will be three. And so, you know, I think we need to be careful with just making, just like when we did that blanket, you know, okay, it's gonna be this large swath. There's, there's a big risk to, to just saying all along the edge of the property or of, of the town, that's where we're going to go ahead and, and rezone. I think that, that will, that will cause a big uproar in the community. So, thanks.
Diana, is your hand up?
Yeah, just one last question. Back on the, the, the property that's immediately along the train tracks that's actually owned by the train, do they ever allow that to be developed?
That, that, the train doesn't have any property that is big enough to develop, other than perhaps the Caltrain station, which they've now leased to the town.
Although, and speaking of properties adjacent to the train, Diana, the other thought that came up, that I don't think we've looked at, are those properties along Watkins between the rail crossing and El Camino. There's a multi, there's a big commercial building right there on the corner that kinda says larger property, larger development.
Are you pointing to it with the arrow? Is that what you're talking about?
Are you talking about the commercial building on El Camino?
That's the commercial building.
Yes.
Yeah. I agree with that one.
I mean, I know people who live in that area who, I mean, their, their whole focus is to put in a sidewalk and make it more friendly for moms to walk their kids. That's not a community that will in any way embrace it. They're gonna totally fight it. I'm not, I, I'm not disagreeing with what Bob said, which is that every community will fight it. But I do think that the properties right next to Oakwood are less likely to fight it.
Yeah, because that's what they've got.
Yeah, so.
It kinda goes back to what, are they immediately adjacent to condensed, to dense housing already? And if we start with that lens, then they're, they're gonna be more receptive. And then if we actually look at the properties, so it seems like we need to do both those steps.
But Diana, they're not already next to dense housing.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Which ones are you talking about? I thought he was talking about where that, places where they have the facials and stuff, the.
No, no, that's not where they're talking. No.
No, but the one that is, Arada's property is next to multifamily houses.
Yes, right. So that makes sense.
Mr. Mayor, just one last question for Lisa. As the town goes through the process and evaluates the upzoning of particular sections, I'm assuming that there is an analysis done or required to be done with respect to environmental impact for traffic and flow and those sorts of things. So those property owners who may object, but they have no cause of action, they may object to it, but one of their concerns may be, yeah, we're adjacent to multifamily housing in Menlo Park or the county. But now you're adding ten more houses in our area, which comes with ten to twelve more cars, which means there's more cars on our street, more traffic. That's gonna be evaluated as part of the environmental process, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but it, it, you know, in, in the, in the Arada property that we're talking about, there, there are multi ways to get out. You know, you can go through, through the Oak, Oak Grove, coming out into Atherton or into Redwood City and getting out to Woodside Road. And, and, you know, we could tell him, you know, put the parking lot on the other side and the driveway on the other side. I, I, I don't think that that's something that we need to worry about specifically in that area.
No, it's just, I was just pointing out, uh, council member, that there's an environmental process that these go through that do evaluate those sorts of things. Uh, and, you know, the complaints that we received, particularly from the residents along Selby, is that when you put a traffic light at Selby, people are gonna use it. So those ones on Oakwood, if there were a traffic light on Selby, they would come to that traffic light as an easier access point to exit that community. But at this point, they don't have that traffic light, but it would need to be evaluated.
We're definitely gonna get that comment. There's no question. Okay, uh, I'm not, is there more that we have to do?
Well, it sounds like you would like us to come back with a map, hopefully very quickly. And I heard a few council members offered to do some homework and maybe drive around and mark up a map. And if they wanted to provide that to George, you can give that to myself and then we can consolidate all of those comments and bring it back to you before we go out for a community meeting.
Yeah. I haven't specifically asked for public comment on this issue, but I'd like to do that. So notwithstanding that we've had a really very thorough discussion, if there is any public comment, it would be welcome. Okay, John Malmbeish. Can you unmute yourself?
I think I'm unmuted now. Not much of a comment, but I was just looking at that table with the numbers on it. And to get to three fifty-four, you're setting a farm on ADU.
Uh, yeah. Yep.
Okay. I mean, I have no basis for saying it is or it isn't.
But our, our obligation is to zone it with, with reasonable assessment of what, what could occur. I, it's a fair question that, that has been asked several times, Lisa, that I'll bring up now. Because I've heard from some people that the Housing Authority Department is changing their methodology. And instead of just approving the zoning and saying, yes, that satisfies your requirement, which is what they did eight years ago, now they can come back interim if they don't see development occurring. Is, is that right? Maybe you could comment on that.
Sure. So a couple of things, just as far as schedule, we need to submit a draft housing element to HCD for a ninety-day review period. And so I have that scheduled occurring between June and August. And so that would occur and get comments prior to your formal adoption of it. So we'll know then, you know, if HCD is supportive of the number of ADUs we've suggested and the overlay scenario before you go through the step of doing the zone changing. And then your next question is about enforcement. They've established a new enforcement wing of HCD, specifically to be looking at the jurisdiction's progress towards meeting their housing element goals. We don't know yet what enforcement mechanisms they would utilize. But the thought is that if we're not meeting our targets year over year, they're gonna wanna see us zone additional properties and do further steps in order to meet our housing element goals.
So does that mean that they're now considering the housing element goals, not just the zoning to enable the housing, but actual achieving of the housing?
Yeah, they wanna see that it's gonna get built in that timeframe.
Okay, John, I thank you for your public comment. If anybody else has public comment or if any members of the council have additional comments or questions, now is a good time. Bill?
Yeah, so Lisa, are you including the, the few apartments that are in the new dorm that should be done by next year or the year after?
There, my understanding is there are not any independent.
Yeah, there are. The other are, it's very few. There's like eight of them or something like that, four to eight. That, that, that are gonna be for either the RAs or for the faculty that live there.
Okay, I'll take another look at the plan.
Yeah, thank you.
Are they part of this cycle or last, or the next cycle?
Depends on when they get a certificate of final occupancy. Yeah, as to which cycle they're counted in.
Go ahead. Okay, well, if there's no further comments, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Enjoy your, enjoy your halls vacations.
Okay.